This is Klein.
Here.
Mr. Greider. Mr. Morrissey. Mr. Amos. Mr. Foyce.
Here. Stewart.
I would like to approve the agenda of the council work session as proposed.
Thank you, ma'am.
A motion has been made with the second all in favor.
Aye.
Oh, all right. We have an agenda. First up, first item is the discussion of the fireworks used in ordinance line.
Well, hello, everyone. I know if, if your phone calls were anything like mine, your phone was ringing off the hook during fireworks season. We still hear them popping off in our neighborhood even as we speak. I mean, every evening there's something going on. Um, I for one feel as if it has escalated to the point where we need to ban them. I think it's as simple as that. I realize that with the sale of them, there will always be something, but it's almost like this year. It, it was almost like they were industrial in nature. The local ones, they were as good as the mayor's fireworks in our neighborhood. We had them going off in three different directions and, and it was loud and it was, I just thought they were almost industrial, almost commercial in the nature of them. And I believe that that's a disaster waiting to happen. And, um, the mess, as I'm going door to door, the mess in the side, on the sidewalks and in the streets, I mean, there's cost to cleaning that all up. And I just think we're better off banning them and I'd, I'd like to take the temperature of the council and see what your opinions are on this matter.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to echo Klein's sentiment. I had an overwhelming number of calls this year of people with complaints. Um, and they had called the police and they understand that the police can't, can't do much unless they catch them, but I know there were a lot of calls that went into our police department. And what was really troubling to me, we often penalize the majority for the actions of the minority. And in this case, I think that's what we, we need to do. We gave the people supporting fireworks that that's a chance, gave them the opportunity. And very honestly, many of them, again, probably the minority of them, but many of them were not responsible in their usage. Again, as Mrs. Klein said, in my neighborhood, it, it, they seem to be industrial. They were huge, loud. Um, a couple of them hit my house. Thank goodness it didn't cause any damage. Um, but they weren't responsible. Those using them outside of the established timelines and the dates. I don't think were responsible and unfortunately I would have to support banning them as a result of those actions. Also, and I don't know Mrs. Klein, if you got hold of Mrs. Bowman, but Wendy Bowman had a picture of the cleanup that was necessary in the crossroads area. Uh, people went out there to camp to watch the wonderful mayor's fireworks and I totally support that, but then clean up after yourself. Um, did you get hold of her, Mrs. Klein?
I did, and she said she was going to look for them and try to get them in. I'm wondering, Mr. Youngblood, if she got them to you. Um, looks like it didn't happen. She was searching for them.
Okay. Well, it was, I was absolutely shocked when I saw the amount of debris that was left behind just in the crossroads area. And I've heard from people calling me that this was the case in their neighborhood and in parks, whatever. They weren't responsible enough to follow the guidelines of when they could shoot off the fireworks. And then they weren't even courteous enough to clean up their mess. Um, for that reason, I totally support banning fireworks to be shot off in the city limits.
Mr. Mayor. Just, just for a quick, quick, uh, quick, quick, uh, thing about the crossroads. That was, uh, and there's, there's debris everywhere, absolutely. Um, and I didn't, I didn't think people had the approval to be able to set them off there, but that was a legal day to shoot them off. Uh, if it was on the, the fourth, but, uh, I'll take it. I use, well, Mr. Morrissey.
Well, Mr. Mayor, um, uh, we're going down a road again that we've already been on. And if anybody would have looked at the number of calls when we did ban them, evidently the council forgets that we already had banned them in 2018. And, uh, we still got, uh, between five and six hundred, uh, calls, uh, at that time. Um, so that's when we cut, we went from five to banning and then to three, and this is, we just completed our second year of three. Uh, but included in the three is the fact that fireworks aren't allowed on, on New Year's Eve or around that period, even though they're lawfully legally sold. And, um, what we're doing by banning is, uh, we're forgetting that the primary problem is the enforcement of this. Um, when, when you have an ordinance that doesn't get enforced, uh, people are going to, uh, believe that they have, uh, you know, an okay to go ahead and do whatever they want. You're talking about crossroads, you're talking about parks, you're talking about other areas. State law says that you are not to set off fireworks on anything other than your own personal property. So you're not allowed to set them off in the streets, you're not allowed to set them off on the sidewalk. You're not allowed even to set them off if you're a renter on that property if your landlord tells you that they are not allowed. So here we get back to enforcement. Um, if you're not doing them on your personal property, that's a violation of the state law. That's in the state law, seven twenty-seven. So, um, we set up an ordinance, we restricted their sales, uh, uh, to industrial areas, uh, unless it's that one place it was grandfathered in on a crossroads. So we, we had requested, some on council had requested some money for enforcement and the use of, uh, police reserve officers. That never happened. Um, so we talk about the sales of the fireworks. Sales of the fireworks this year included these kinds of fireworks that I believe belong in the display fireworks. They're not industrial, they're display fireworks. And I believe that, and I, I would ask that, um, some research be done on some of these vendors to see if they were selling some of those fireworks that should be classed as display fireworks, which are not allowed either for sale or for use. Um, so that's another area. Um, and I think that we should check into the fact that can we, as a city, ban the sale of those kind of fireworks where we say, see that they are mimicking display fireworks? I think that's one thing that we could look into. Uh, another thing I, is I believe that we should write into our city ordinance new language that says that the, uh, setting off a fireworks in an illegal fashion and illegal time goes to the property. You don't have to catch them, you just have to have reasonable approved or probable cause to show or to see that fireworks have been set off illegally at this place and therefore that citation goes to the property. You don't need to have an individual. I don't believe that banning is going to do anything other than what it did before and that still, it did not stop the setting off of fireworks, uh, as we saw in 2018. Uh, we keep it at three, uh, three days. That allows those who are legally going, uh, to set these off, to have those times, uh, to set those off that are legally sold. You don't buy a pair of shoes or a shirt to sit and look at them. You buy them to use them. People buy fireworks to use them and as long as the state is going to continue to make them illegal, people will use them. And many times, unfortunately, they'll use them illegally. Uh, I believe that this is something that needs to, if one, uh, if somebody wants to write up a letter that goes to the governor and sees it to the legislature, asking them in strong terms to, uh, ban the sales or make them illegal again, that has more footing than trying to ban again in Waterloo, the use of something that is, uh, legally purchased by, uh, the people who live in Waterloo.
Uh, we got seven minutes. Who else wants to chime in?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Greider.
Um, so, uh, I do support a ban. Um, having a two-year-old who doesn't like fireworks and knowing next year that I'll have a three-year-old, yeah, ten-year-old, not looking forward to that. Um, so we do support a ban. However, that is a band-aid and, and not very well sealed, sealed with an able plan. Um, we need only look at Cedar Falls, which has banned fireworks, or Cedar Rapids, or Des Moines, look at them having calls at the same, uh, per capita rate as, as what we did. Um, so a, a ban has to come with something. It has to come with teeth. Uh, and whether that's more enforcement or whether that's requiring that vendors when they sell them also tell people who buy them that these are illegal for utilization in the city limits of Waterloo. Or if it's requiring people to get, uh, fireworks licenses or to get the legislation license. We have to, just banning them, which I fully support, is not going to solve the issue because they are still legal by. So, so we have to come up with some mechanism like that. The legal use of them are a reality and maybe that is issuing a citation to property where they are found or, or something like that. You know, I grew up in Jennifer Fox and fireworks used to be illegal in Iowa, but they were illegal in Nebraska. And you just have to stop people coming over the bridge to Jennifer Fox in June and July and then, you know, ask for a reasonable search if they had fireworks. Um, I don't, I don't know what the enforcement mechanism is that will vary without work for the city. But that banning that is not going to accomplish what we want. There has to, there has to be teeth to it, enforceable teeth to make it purge when people use these.
Mr. Mayor. Mr., who is that?
Mr. Ames.
Mr. Ames.
Yeah. Yeah, Mr. Mayor, um, you know, Councilman Morrissey and I have gone through all of these different scenarios as far as the fireworks. And we received the statistics as far as the actual site or the actual complaints during that time. But one of the things that I don't see here is, is during those three days, how many actual phone calls are the police department receiving? Because that was part of my thought process was just, okay, whether we ban them or didn't ban them, we still had pretty much the same number of complaints. So for me, it was, okay, during that timeframe, let's give the police a break. Let's give them the opportunity to do other things around the holiday. You know, this is obviously the will of the council as to whether it's banned or not, but from everything that I see, it's not going to make any difference whether we ban them or not. Point to make the difference is, is our state legislature actually going back to the ban because when you look at the numbers, that's when the complaints are the lowest. And even then, those complaints still come about. So for me, I, I, I can't see any sense in us changing the way that we have it set up right now because I firmly believe that we're still going to have the exact same things we have. So for me, that thought process is let's give the police department a break for the three days.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Bozen.
Thank you, sir. Uh, as, as the other council member said, a, a ban is difficult. The sale is going on in town and we, and we can't stop that. The problem is, and I've got some information from Major Leibl that over six years of fireworks complaints, we've written one citation. So there's not, there's no teeth. I had, I had, uh, Major Leibl send me a printout of all the calls due first this year until, until, uh, July fifth. And there was a number of them that were dispatched, offered to dispatch and, and most of the comments were warranted and vice. And so citations aren't being issued and I know it's officer discretion whether they write a citation or not, but without, without, uh, teaching an ordinance where we do write citations, we're not going to stop it. The problem that, that I have is the size of the ordinances that are going off in town. And specifically, you know, NFPA eleven twenty-three deals with display fireworks. And if you have a one-inch in diameter firework, you need seventy-five to a hundred feet of clearance from anything impossible, including other people's property lines. When I was a fire marshal, I had to, you had to go out and inspect these displays before they shot them off and make sure they had the proper tidiness. Now it takes a two-inch diameter, uh, uh, fireworks, you know, that's a two-hundred feet. Very seldom are you going to have any place in somebody's neighborhood that's two-hundred feet away from your house. Yet these people are shooting off mortars, you know, within ten, fifteen feet of their neighbor's houses and that's where I have an issue. Number one, the size of it. Number two, the fact that we're not enforcing it. Thank you.
All right. Councilman Foyce, do you have anything before we?
Uh, you know, last year when we, when we brought this up, uh, you know, this wasn't just about me. I don't, don't buy fireworks. I don't sell, you know, shoot fireworks, any of those things. So I asked, you know, the constituents and it, they were split and I'm sure they're going to be split again. Uh, I, I, you know, I, I think, you know, what Councilman Bozen says, correct. I think what Councilman Morrissey said, correct. I, I, I don't know. I mean, looking at the, the data that we had, you know, banning them was just the same amount of sites, the same amount of, of, uh, phone calls that we were, I think really has changed. And, you know, if there's a way that we can, uh, let, I know where that, that, that conversation is going to go, but if there's a way we can size that we authorize, you know, for sale, city limits of Waterloo, that might be a route to go. But, uh, but my guess is if we try to, that we're going to have somebody at the point, I'll just go, that's not something we're going to be able to do, you know. For as far as the, I, I don't believe so, but, you know, that's, that's where I was at last year. I'll, I'll, we're, we're constituents and we're type one.
So, so where, where is the document at? Did he send that to everybody? Did I get a copy of that too?
What document is that, Mr. Mayor?
Uh, the calls.
No, it was sent to the city council members. Right. At CC DeJol Fitzgerald.
Damn, I didn't even get a copy.
Want me to forward it to you, Mayor?
Yeah.
Okay, I got it here on my.
So the only thing is the first year we did it, there was a little bit of confusion. Second year, um, yeah, I like to see those numbers because I didn't think it was as much. Um, because folks didn't really understand what was going on, but, um, yeah, I really don't have a pulse of, uh, what council wants. I hear, um, you know, three, two, three, uh, against. I hear two, three. Uh, keep it the same. So I guess I don't really have a pulse of what you would like to do.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm hearing that everybody has the same concern, that everybody's hearing from their constituents with the problem. What I'm also hearing everybody say is the problem is that we don't seem to have found a way to enforce it. I'm wondering if our new police chief has any ideas, if there's some suggestions that he would like to make to us. What also really changed for me this year is that Chief Treelor told us that the department had meeting that there's now injuries. One person that it, fireworks exploded in their face, if I'm remembering correctly. So now we're also talking about the dangers that, that the fireworks are causing to other citizens. I'm definitely in favor of banning it. I would just wish that, that our police chief would have some suggestions on how we could improve enforcement.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Well, once again, I just, I gotta go back. We tried banning the calls at that time. We're between five and six hundred. Calls this year are going to be over six hundred. Um, the issue is not with banning or kicking three days. The issue is that the sale of fireworks is legal in the state of Iowa. And people are going to buy them and they're going to use them. If that's what happens, uh, that's why they call them consumer fireworks. I do believe that we as a council, uh, can, uh, tweak our ordinance by putting in there some language as been suggested by Councilman Bozen and Foyce, uh, and myself to, uh, limit the type of fireworks that are allowed. But then again, it goes back to what Councilman Bozen, uh, has said, and that is we have to have enforcement. And, uh, I believe that some suggestions have been given in the past about how we can, uh, uh, sort of build up or make that enforcement a little bit better, uh, but that those were never followed through on. So, uh, I, 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 banning is not going to solve this issue, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, we try.
Um, I've been listening to all of my colleagues and I, all of this business about if we could make them do it here or make them do it there or control how big the ordinance is that they are able to fire off. It's like rule, 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 rule. What we have learned with fireworks is that no one obeys the rules. So it's very simple and the police cannot enforce this because by the time they get out there, it's all gone. Everybody's gone and it's very difficult to know exactly which house the fireworks are coming from. So if you ban them all, if you just say, we're banning the use of fireworks in Waterloo, then you know one thing and it's fairly simple. Anyone who fires anything off is breaking the law right there, right now. And then if we get lucky, we get an address, we could make a, uh, you know, we could make a claim against that person. But to do nothing, we've already had one injury. Is the city liable if we burn somebody's house down? Is the city, had, does the city have any liability for making these things legal and it blows someone's hands off? I just think we need to be really responsible here and understand that this is a category of, of mischief that cannot be policed even if you had hundreds more policemen because it's elusive and it happens in the dark and it, it's quickly put on and it's quickly over. I think we owe the citizens something more. These are escalating. We all know they're escalating in the size and, and power of the explosives. We're headed for disaster and I would like to think that we're going to help here.
Well, and you know, uh, interesting thing about the, the numbers or the, uh, the numbers of calls, uh, that's been a way for us to, uh, kind of figure out exactly where the community is at and what we're hearing. But just because the number of calls, uh, were at six hundred or seven hundred doesn't mean that that means more people were doing fireworks, more people. But when I looked, uh, that night, there were more people doing larger scale fireworks. Uh, as Dave mentioned, that are, what did you say? They're display fireworks. I've seen more display and larger types of fireworks being shot off than I have in previous year, uh, on that level. But, um, just because of, of calls were at a certain number doesn't necessarily mean more people are, less people are doing fireworks and more. But anyway, um, so I got, uh, Mr. Foyce.
All right. Can I just, a couple of things really quick. We, we have in our ordinance, as the fireworks are banned, other than July second, third and fourth. So anytime they're shot off outside of July second, third and fourth, that's a leak. So I mean, and I, you know, we're, we're talking three days right now. And I also think the, the, the thing that you, Mr. Mayor, pointed out, you saw larger scale, that, that could be because people were, have stayed home, you know, because of the pandemic for currently. And people aren't traveling and doing all that other stuff. I think that, that we also have to remember, yeah, they may be selling larger fireworks, but people may be shooting them off or at home this year because of the pandemic. And whether you want to believe it or not, that, that is something that may have happened. So, sorry, thank you.
No, you're fine. You're fine. It leads me to Dave's point though, Councilman Bozen about, you know, you go down the aisles and they'll say ten thousand or five thousand, but it leads me to the point, are they selling larger types of fireworks as well, which we need to research, but I'll take one more comment before we move on.
Mr. Mayor. The, the biggest issue that I've heard from constituents is that they have dogs, they have kids, they're veterans. It impacts them. Perhaps, this is a public problem, perhaps we need to go to the public. Would there be some way for people to denote whether it's a flag or a ribbon or something that they put on their property that they believe that fireworks would negatively impact them or their family? Um, perhaps as a way just to, for some sort of like social contract, social control, not like, if you know your neighbor has a green ribbon around their fence and that they feel that fireworks, uh, would negatively impact them. Maybe it doesn't stop everyone, but it might slow some people down if you have to think about the consequences of your action. I know it doesn't, it doesn't solve the problem, but just thinking of a way that we can all recognize that we're neighbors and come up with solutions for our neighbors.
All right. So I'm hearing, I only got three on the against and I got two, maybe three for four and I'm kind of confused on the last one. So we'll, well, I guess we'll have to do some polling this week, uh, to figure out where people are at, whether or not, uh, we need to bring this back or not. But, um, uh, do we need to have more discussion on this next week after we kind of figure out where everybody pretty much stands at and give council an opportunity, uh, to talk amongst each other, give Councilman Bozen an opportunity to see, um, what are, what is being sold and what's legally, is, are there any changes to the legal process on what can actually be sold into who? So just trying to figure out, um, where, where folks are at. Do we need another work session and information or before we bring it or do you want to bring it?
Mr. Mayor.
Please, please.
Yeah, I, I believe that merit additional discussion just based on the number of residents that are opposed. But I would really like to get some input from our new police chief. But I would really like to get some input from our new police chief.
So we will, uh, we will, um, get a, uh, another work session set up and, uh, we will hear from the PD now that they heard the voices of the council. We'll get another one set up with the, uh, with the chief, Mr. Morrissey.
Well, I, I would just ask if we're gonna have another session or is gonna, discussion gonna go forward? That, uh, the police department, uh, and/or the city attorney, uh, go to the vendors that had sold fireworks within Waterloo, uh, to see their, uh, inventories and see if those inventories included any sales of, uh, fireworks that could be considered display fireworks.
All right, so, um, Marty and Chief, uh, we can, we can talk, uh, tomorrow morning and see if we can get some of these answers mapped out. So one is to figure out exactly, uh, what's being sold. And then number two is, uh, trying to figure out, uh, possible ways to enforce what's either the three day or to enforce a complete ban and how we can do that. So we'll take up those, um, two conversations for council next week. All right, uh, next on the agenda is, uh, discussion of residential parking ordinance amendment. Mr. Um, Mr. Peterson?
Mayor, Marty Peterson, New York Department. Apparently, the council in twenty eighteen addressed the issue of, um, recreational keepers in driveways, specifically the front guards of residences, um, and considered prohibiting, basically, the permanent parking of an RV trailer keeper in driveway and chose not to ban that. This is, uh, I guess revisiting of, of that, um, based on complaints of camping trailers being parked in driveways or additions to the driveway in the front yard. Uh, the ordinance also, um, allows for visitors to just keep, uh, camper in driveway for a drive for no more than thirty days in any time. So that's the proposed change to the ordinance.
Mr. Mayor?
Hello, I kinda missed that last piece. I had to go to the bathroom. Are you done, Marty?
Um, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I've been talking to Mr. Peterson about this because, uh, the trailer, we have a picture of the trailer that I had a problem with on Zachary Court. Um, but there have, there are other areas in my ward that have problems with things that people are parking in their driveway, beside their house and in front of their house. No, the one on Zachary Court. Well, let's bring that one up so that everyone can see that. That's another issue that has cropped up in my ward, where people are buying these little sheds that look like tiny houses. And in this case, the person who bought this little shed, put it within a foot of his back door. And the neighbors told me, and of course, that's anecdotal, that someone was living in that little shed and moving freely back and forth to the house. And the neighbors were up in arms about that. And then if you move the pictures, it shows that when code enforcement went out, all that happened was that the little tiny house there was moved over a little. See, there's the tiny house moved over a little bit. The neighbors don't like those kinds of buildings in the driveway. They're, they think, and I have to agree with them, those little sheds are meant for the backyard. Um, we have more photos. That's in my ward off Sager Avenue. It's not on Sager, I can't quite remember the name of the street. This is the Zachary Court situation that's up now. It's where someone has actually cemented a slab in front of their picture window to park their trailer. It's unsightly, it's a dead center in a cul-de-sac. It's the first thing you see when you go into that neighborhood. Um, the neighbors just don't like that. And then we have a third issue in my ward, if we could find those pictures. Um, and it is a situation, again, with one of those tiny houses. No, not any of the. That's the same one on Zachary Court. There, that one. There's a tiny house beside, that's over here. How come it's over here? No, no, no. Is this the one they can see? Okay, this one, this person often has that little trailer out on the street. And then in his yard, he's got, if you can see by the side of the house, a tiny little shed that almost looks like a little house. And then he brings in long white trailers and puts them in front of it. And it's, it's a chronic issue. That one happens to be on Stephan Avenue or Stephen Avenue. It's T-S-T-E-P-H-A-N, however they pronounce that. There it is. That is a constant.
Is there any way to flip the screen? Cause I, I can't, I, I see the number, the third slide, but I'm not able to see the second or the fourth of it. So I saw slide number one.
Okay.
There we go.
My point is, the, this parking is getting out of control. And people are ex, seem to be extending the uses of their homes with these little tiny dwellings. And it's unsightly. Um, that, that's unsightly right there. You would not like it in your neighborhood. You just wouldn't. It's, it's just not a good thing. And these constant, uh, these white trailers in one of those videos, um, that's so commercial in a residential. And I just think that this ordinance should extend beyond recreational vehicles to include these tiny sheds, which very, very clearly look like little bitty houses, and these commercial grade trailers being parked in a residential street. It's not what you bargain for when you move into a residential area. So I would, I would like those added.
Uh, Mrs., Mrs. Jewett?
Yeah, um, I agree with the, the concerns of the neighbors and think that we should, um, amend the ordinance to address that. But one thing that might help, um, I had worked with code enforcement a year, year and a half ago, and we had drafted, um, proposals to come to the council saying, because it was a problem and many of the party issues is if a, a vehicle or a trailer is parked illegally, code enforcement goes out and takes it, but then they come back and they've moved it two feet. And so the, the timeframe has to start all, all over again. With the ordinance that we had drafted, that I thought was coming to you, um, was that regardless, so you move it two feet each time. If you get three citations in a year, you're going to, to be fined for it. So the fact that you're playing the game of moving it a foot, moving it again another foot, um, regardless of that, we would cite you if you got three citations in a year. That might help a little bit, um, with this issue, Mrs. Fine, but certainly would address a lot of other issues as well. So I would ask Mr. Peterson if Maria has brought those ordinances to you yet? If you know the status of them, or if you could look into it?
Have you, uh, hey, Marty, still on here?
Yes, sir.
Um, have you had a chance to see, uh, some of the, uh, proposals that was brought forth that Mrs. Jewett mentioned?
Yes, we, we, we have the front yard RV trailer ordinance drafted. And it's also sent on the, uh, second ordinance ready to park. As I stand here, I'm having a little difficulty remembering, uh, which, which one that was, but I know we've submitted two, two here, and I think we're waiting on her response on that. But I mean, if the consensus of the council is they wanna add the tiny homes and the commercial, uh, trailers, certainly we can draft an ordinance, and that's not an issue. So for purposes of today, I'd be interested in hearing the consensus of the.
So, uh, did you want the, uh, small little, um, things added? Do you want, uh, what Mrs. Fine brought up added?
I do, yeah.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Well, I, I don't support this current ordinance, um, or the amendments to the ordinance. Um, because this is people's property. And unless there's a code enforcement issue, it's their property. Um, and we've had this discussion about other things where we have stated that we shouldn't show and tell people how to run their property, but, but here we are for, for things that, that these people have. So with the RV, with the Zachary Court, we think that a person clearly spent time and money making sure that their RV is taken care of, that, that it's on a slab. And I'm going to guess, I haven't been out there, I'm gonna guess that there's, there would be no way to get what looks to be a thirty, thirty-five foot floor behind their house. Um, and, you know, my parents, I grew up going camping, so I know what goes into a chipping. Um, obviously, there are places you can store them, but I can tell you that a half dozen times my parents stored the key for somewhere that wasn't their house, it was broken into. And, and that's, that's a place where people make memories, where, where childhood was. On, on the industrial one, I mean, we see them in my neighborhood and, and their people's small businesses, they're all wrapped up. They're, they're, they're contracting business, they're plumbing business, they're woodworking business. Um, and so to tell a small business owner that they have to spend more money, either to extend their driveway all the way around their house, or that they have to store it somewhere, including in a lot of cases with lots of expensive tools and other things that they need to do their jobs, I, I, I just, I don't see it. Now, I, I, I will concede that parking them on the street probably isn't great. Uh, and so that might be something that we're looking at, but, but these other issues, I, I just, for me, it's, it's, it's a no.
Do you have, we got two yeses and, uh, just each other, no?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Morrissey?
Mr. Mayor, as you know, you were involved with the conversations that occurred before when the parking of recreational vehicles, that had been brought up. And basically, what had happened, it was taken out of the ordinance, uh, language at that point in time, uh, because of, uh, the people that were owning recreational vehicles and that stepping up and talking about, um, you know, their opposition to that. Um, tiny homes, uh, they're, they're that, they're tiny homes. Uh, and, uh, people have a right to buy those, just like they do recreational vehicles. Uh, a place to park, uh, I agree, Mr. Greider is not on the street. Uh, but if they have a driveway and the driveway is sufficient to hold that and it's not the front yard, not their side yard, uh, then, uh, I believe that they should be allowed to, uh, park those in those places that have been authorized by the, uh, code that we have now. Uh, so I, I don't believe there's any point in, uh, including tiny homes or these others, uh, in this, um, manner.
So you're not in favor of, uh, this ordinance?
I'm in favor, I, I believe that what Marty had written up, which I read, uh, that sounded okay, but including these other things, I don't think it's okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, uh, is there anyone else before we go to Mrs. Fine for the second round of comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Hamis?
Yeah, um, for me, I really cannot support the individuals, from a standpoint of telling individuals, you can't park your trailer here, you can't park your commercial vehicles here. Simply because of the fact that, I know that over the past five years, we have had this discussion. It's one of the things that we required for a person to put down a cement pad or something to where it was an actual place for them to park their vehicle. And I just, I can't go along with telling individuals that are buying their property, you're not gonna be able to park those vehicles on your land. It's just for me, it, it, it's not what we should be doing.
Uh, anyone else before, that hadn't spoken before we go to Mrs. Fine?
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Foyce?
Yes, sir. Uh, uh, right now, I'm not in favor of this ordinance. I, you know, I, I'm gonna echo the comments from Councilman Hamis and, uh, Greider. Uh, the, as far as the tiny home, it looked like it was on a trailer. You know, it might be something that is used for some kind of recreational purpose that we're not aware of, you know? And, and that they can't go to it or do, you know, take it to where they need to right now. Um, those businesses, uh, you know, if there's those commercial vehicles, it might be a, you know, a new, a, a new company that's just starting out, they can't afford anything other than to park where they're at right now. So I think, you know, we, we have to give the benefit of the doubt in previous council discussion on this. So I'm not, I, I would vote no on this.
So you vote, so you vote no on the actual ordinance without the amendments that, um?
Uh, I, I mean, I, I don't so much as the, the change.
Okay. All right, Mrs., Mrs. Fine?
If, if you all noticed, originally, that little house was parked so close to the side door of that ranch house that had there been a fire, no one could have got out that entrance. Also, it's been over a year that that building has been there. I get calls every week about it. And I just, I don't know where we're going with this. Do we have commercial areas of the city where businesses are expected to be in? Or is every residential area free range for businesses, running their mowing services, running their whatever services they have? Can they set it up? Can they put a sign on their yard? Can they do all of these things? Don't you have a right when you buy in a, in a quiet residential area to believe that the city will help protect your property values by having a standard? A standard of how you are? What is to prevent someone from rolling a yacht in there? You know, I mean, if you cement your whole yard and put cars in there, can you imagine what that does to the property value of your neighborhood? That's what these people are complaining about. They don't wanna stop businesses, but they want businesses in a business section. They want those little housing sheds to be in the backyard. They want to protect their property values as anyone wants to. Waterloo wants to attract people to live here. I would not buy a house on either of the streets you just saw because of that. And it, and.
Mr. President, Marty?
Right now, there were houses for sale across from the Stephan Avenue house. Took a long time for them to go and they didn't go at the price they wanted.
All right, Mr. Peterson? Uh, so that, that smaller little house, um, that's, so you can actually have. um, that's, so you can actually have another room, uh, property taxes being paid on that small house, I can, I can get a smaller house right on my property. But that property taxes being paid on that?
No.
I can, I can place a, I can place a small house on my property?
I'm not aware.
Happy subject.
Well, as I understand it, those tiny homes are wheels. But they are not, they, they are basically homemade trailers, recreational trailers that people, folks live in. So, um, it, it, you know, it's gonna depend factually on what, what we're dealing with. If somebody constructed a shed on the driveway and living there, I think that's gonna trigger zoning, um, issues. As I understand it, those tiny homes all have wheels. And I am unaware of an estate or city law.
So, uh, yes, yes.
So, I, what this really sounds like is this should be a conversation that neighbors have with each other about, about recreational vehicles and not something that, that we tell people what to do. Um, I have, I have constituents who keep, uh, boats when they, when they come out of dock or there too, so that they can get them cleaned up. But if they're in the road and they're not here, I, I think that this, you know, we talk a lot about making Waterloo an enticing place for people to come. Uh, and I think it certainly does say something if we're gonna tell people, hey, you bought this recreation vehicle, but we don't want to see it. Or, hey, you started a small business, or keep it out of sight, out of line. I, I certainly think that says something about Waterloo. Um, I just don't think it's positive. People have a problem, they should have an adult conversation about what that means for them and what the difficulties are with their neighbors, rather than having the city council in this city tell everyone that, that they should not do something that, that hundreds of people enjoy, thousands of people across the state. We should just be cognizant of what we're, what we're asking here.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Morrissey?
Well, I, I, I would just ask that the council read what the proposed ordinance is. Because ordinance and some of the stuff that I hear being said, uh, what I object to is adding what is there. There's only two parts that are increased, uh, that add some definition in the ordinance language that, uh, City Attorney Peterson is saying. And the first one is not more than three recreational vehicles are parked on any family residential property at any time. And not residing on the property shall be parked on any residential property at any time, except for visitors. And then visitor parking shall be limited to not more than thirty days per calendar year. That's the first part. And then the second part is no recreational vehicles shall be parked in the front yard of any one or two family residential property, except when such vehicles being actively loaded or unloaded, or except for times not exceeding two hours when the vehicle's being washed. To me, that's a totally, um, understandable and reasonable, uh, ordinance, uh, and amendment language to what we already have there. Cause we already know that those vehicles, uh, according to code, cannot be, uh, parked on anything other than a, a surface, a hard surface. At least that's my understanding of what the ordinance currently is, Mr. Mayor.
So, so right now, uh, with Mr. Morrissey's clarification on, on this, um, we have an ordinance in front of us. And, um, we also had, uh, a conversation about adding to the ordinance. Uh, am I hearing that the ordinance is okay to move forward by conversations of the amendments that Mrs. Klein had brought up? To not add that at this point?
Mr. Mayor?
Move this ordinance forward?
I guess my question is, front yard, do we mean like anywhere in the front of the house? Or are we talking specifically on like a grassy area? Cause I think that is essential to, to suss out. Because if it's parked in the grass, that's one thing, but if we're at the front, that's a completely different thing.
Mr. Peterson?
The, the intention of the ordinance is that, that photo you saw of property, the fifth miller, Zachary Court, that the purpose of the ordinance would be to ban parking of that trailer in the front of that house. So I want to clear about that.
Okay, and that was, thank you, that was my understanding, Mr. Mayor, is that this isn't just banning people from parking a trailer in someone's grass lawn, but parking it anywhere in the front of the house. And if that, that is the case, as Mr. Peterson said, then I am definitely a no vote on this one.
We gotta, we gotta know to bring this to council. Uh, Councilman Morrissey, you're okay in bringing this to the, to the vote out?
Well, with, Mr. Mayor, uh, given what City Attorney Peterson said, I believe that D two on this needs to be rewritten.
Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Hamis?
Yep. Having heard with, uh, Council, Councilman Gre- Greider just asked, for me, looking at the picture that Councilwoman Klein showed, that individual would fall under this ordinance as far as being in violation. Well, for me, I, I, there, there's a driveway there. So I cannot support it simply because they have a courted driveway. They have met the things as far as making sure that it is not sitting on the grass or on dirt or something. So as it's written, I, I think that that number two would actually impact the individuals in that picture in a negative way.
So that's three council members. Who else wants this to go forward or doesn't want it to go forward?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Julian?
I would like it to go forward.
So that's two to move forward. Mr. Boson or Mr. Foyce, sorry to put pressure on, but I just don't want to put it, put anything on that means staff waste of time if there's no support.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I don't have a problem with what I saw on Zachary Court. I mean, it, it, it meets the definition of, of what we originally intended, that, that recreational vehicles and trailers have to be parked on a hard surface.
So, so that's four to not bring this to the council, to full vote.
Mayor?
Mr. Foyce?
And I, I wouldn't, I mean, I'm the same position. You know, they, they, they spent, you know, probably thousands of dollars to pour that pad to me, but at the time, they thought, now we're gonna, not, and it's not just this. I'm sure there are other families that spent thousands of dollars to do that. While it might look like a, uh, to, to neighbors right now, it might look like a nice store. You know, there are, at the time, the rule, we, we can't just keep living the old ways. You know, within this one, it seems like we're gonna do that. And so then they would have to tear it up at their own expense and spend thousands of dollars. And I'm sure this is the only family that would have to do that. I'm not in favor of, of, of moving forward.
All right, so we got our marching orders, which are not to march. All right, um, what's the third item on here? Third item is, uh, downtown parking agreement, Michelle.
Hi there, um, so we attach the proposed new parking contract to the work session. I hope you've had a chance to look at it. I do have John Routh and Jerry Griswold with Republic Parking here. Um, since we talked through so much of this, that's the last meeting. I wasn't sure how much review we need today. John, do you have any comments you want to share?
Is he on mute?
Maybe.
I think, I think I'm off now. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay. No, I don't have any comments, uh, to share at this point in time, unless there's any, um, additional questions. I think there was, um, some that were, uh, posed to me. I'm not entirely, um, sure who they were from, but I, I, hopefully I've, uh, answered those to, uh, satisfy at this point in time. Um, but, I mean, essentially what is proposed is a very similar, uh, contract to what, um, we previously agreed to, um, the city as it relates to managing the downtown parking system.
All right, council questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Morrissey?
Well, okay, yeah, um, what I was wondering, uh, Michelle, the management agreement that we got sent, uh, for this meeting, was that diff, is that different in any way from the prior one that was for, that, that we were given?
Yes, there are a few what I would consider minor changes, um.
Can you go over those?
Okay. It looks like the red line doesn't show up. I don't know why. Um, okay, so, I guess, John, I'm, maybe if we do this together, we just go to, um, there was an item under sixty that we removed, and I'll have to look my other contract. What that was?
Yeah, the item sixty, uh, specific relates to when we first entered this agreement, um, we had agreed to actually provide some, um, essentially a, a loan to the city at the time. Um, it turned out that that was not needed, um, in the contract as well as, uh, this tax contract. So it was something that was, um, for Cisco around. I believe that that was the, um, specific one that was, uh, taken out this in its entirety. Uh, uh, obviously the city, the city can, uh, borrow money at a, at a better rate. Right, so there is no need for that if the city wishes to move forward, um, obtaining some type of financing. So we, uh, completely removed that item.
Um, we, then in, under section seven, we just cleaned up the language a little bit to make it match how it's actually working. We are the city, revenue is being recorded directly, the Citibank account. Um, Republic pays the expenses, and then we reimburse Republic stores. We verified the preapproval process, and I did increase that to twenty-five hundred in anticipation that we are going to raise that for financing policies. Okay, we've got this word here and there, but there isn't much more than that that was changed.
Oh, okay, so Michelle, thank you, uh, and John, uh, in six B, uh, parentheses eight, um, it talks about snow removal. And first of all, is this contract just a contract for the parking garages? Or does it include on-street parking?
The snow removal is within the ramps only.
Okay, but is this a contract for, an agreement for, uh, Republic in the parking garages as well as on the on-street meter parking?
Yes, in terms of them collecting the revenue for us, providing support, yes. But snow removal is only in the ramp, uh, only in the, I was basically there.
Well, I know that when I read it the first time, it sure didn't seem like it was restricted just to the parking ramps, as it was referring to the meters.
We can, we can clarify that. It is not very much ability to pass snow on the street.
No, I'm not talking about the, the streets, I'm talking around, around the meters.
That's not very much ability either?
Well, but when I read it, it appeared that it was. But now, when I look at this new one, I don't even see that language in there.
Well, that is something that needs changing.
Well, to me, that's a big change though, Michelle.
Well, they weren't providing it before, so I'm not, I mean, there may be inherent in the words.
Yeah, ju- ju- just, well, just to be clear, I mean, this, this contract, um, has, and as I understood it, it includes to provide, um, enforcement and management of on-street parking, uh, services. It has, we have no responsibility to do any snow removal. I, I'm getting that mixed up, I apologize, but so, so removal is a separate issue. We only will do that on the, um, rooftops of the parking facilities. However, enforcement, management, um, any other technologies that relates to managing the on-street portion of the, uh, parking system would fall under our responsibility.
So just for clarity, you are not doing on-street snow removal?
Correct. We're responsible for on-street snow removal. That is something that has traditionally been a responsibility of the, um, I believe the city, um, Public Works Department, but not, not us.
Right, all right, thank you.
Oh, okay, and next thing I was wondering about the security in the parking ramps, because I thought that the council had discussed, uh, upgrading security there, but it looks like in this agreement, um, it doesn't include, uh, that. And matter of fact, it's, there's a no security clause, uh, in there. So who provides security that the council, at least I was led to believe, was going to be upgraded in the parking ramps?
And I can talk to that a little bit. So that, that language specifically, um, a, that's by our attorney. So one thing that we do do is we do not physically stop someone from, or other parties from, hacked by other parties. And so that is something that has been requested by our legal department. One thing that we do do, and have always done, is we will always observe and report back. I don't want to say that it's security, but we are actively out there, deep facilities, driving around, walking around, most importantly, uh, stairwells, uh, every level of the ramp, ensuring that no funny business is going on. One thing that we cannot do, because we are not licensed to do so, is physically stop somebody from breaking into a vehicle, for example. Has been some, uh, additional security upgrades, um, in some facilities. Uh, some cameras have been added. Uh, but the best thing that you can, that we can do, will continue to provide is our walkarounds, having somebody out there in the field, uh, actively in the facilities is the best way to prevent a lot of, for lack of a better term, funny business. That's, uh, that, that, that does happen, uh, in every part of the system throughout the, uh, throughout the time. So, uh, again, just back to that one clause, that is just something that our legal department, um, had to add into the contract, that we cannot physically stop somebody from.
Okay, uh, another question, uh, uh, John, is does Republic Parking, are they going to uphold our fair chance initiative ordinance that we passed? That we're under as of July first?
Um, I guess I'm not as familiar with that fair chance, um, but if it's, if it's a city initiative... it's a city initiative, uh, we've always tried to align ourselves, um, with any city initiative. I mean, we very, very much act like a, a city department, although we're Republican employees. I mean, um, if you can explain that, just if we, um, I can give you.
It's, it's the band the box ordinance.
Oh, I, no, I'm familiar with that. Yeah. No, I, yeah, we, we have done that.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we've done that. We've, um, experienced that in other communities. Um, again, it's just one thing that we just try to align ourselves with. Um, and we just simply make the change on the local level and can go with it.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Bozine, you have questions? Uh, Foyce, Mr. Amis, Greider, June, Klein? All right. Um, we do have a speaker that will speak, um, a little bit later, uh, on this as well. So, um, I guess that's, I guess that's all then. Any other questions for the council? All right. Thank you. I'll see you in a few minutes.
Most adjourned.
Must have been made with second all in favor?
Aye.
We adjourn. Thank you.